All right, shall we?
Yeah.
Shall we? Let's call the meeting to order. And I invite those who are willing and able to stand, and Lanny's not here, to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mic up.
So moved.
Oh yeah, is your mics on? Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pfals. Want anything about additions or deletions, or are you good?
I guess the only thing I'd say is, you know, we had to postpone due to weather, so we're meeting a week after what was regularly scheduled. And we added a few changes to the agenda because of that, which was good, so.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any visitors? No? Okay. We'll move on to number five, the consent agenda. Five-one, all the way through five-ten on the back. Does anyone want any of those pulled out individually to talk about? Any of them? From five-point-one, all the way through five-point-ten? No?
Just make a point to say thank you for the donations.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes?
The Bison Back Court Club donation of $500 for a hotel. The Athletic Booster Club, $2,062 for the Fall Banquet. Pipestone JC's $500 for the help fund. And the Pipestone County Medical Center for $1,763 for the help fund. And Susan Townsend, $20 for the community library.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
So not hearing any. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Five-point-one, all the way through five-point-ten.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pfals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? Any other thoughts or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number six, administrative reports and information. Six-point-one, point-one. Hi, Jackie.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good.
Glad to be here today. We were at 49 percent last year, we were at 39 percent, but we didn't have payroll on last year. So I did a few budget transfers. I haven't signed off on this moving money from one object fortune. Other than that, things look okay, I guess.
I think a major portion of our budget is the, of course, salaries and fringe benefits, and we're at 44 percent there. So a lot of other budgets, we've spent them, which is where we need, wanted to be anyway, so. But if it doesn't have January payroll, that might be a little bit of a...
Well, Dr. Durff told us last year. But this has got January payroll in it. Last year ended at this time.
That sort of was, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Jackie? Thank you, Jackie. Six-point-one, point-two. Mr. Strasser. Hello.
Lower. Yeah. The main thing that I wanted to bring up, I was able to go for part of the state conference for secondary school principals. And a couple of things that came up there. Got to go to the law seminar, which is always insightful. He just innovates us with a lot of information, but it's always good stuff. Things from the People Fair Dismissed Act to how we need to report on maltreatment, child abuse. Brought up e-learning days, talked about TRA. And finally got into specific law cases regarding all the things kids like to know about, free speech, what was the other one? Surgeons sees weapons. He brings out harassment, all those issues. So always good to get a refresher on that. Went to a session on cyber safety. Some of the key takeaways there. Talked about what we should be talking to kids about, what not to post, in terms of who's out there thinking, in terms of there's people that are viewing. Are these people predators, are they not predators? And what are the things that we shouldn't be putting out about who I am? So that was really good. And one of the facts that he brought up was that teens spend nearly nine hours consuming media daily. It always gets me thinking, well, in the education world, what does that mean for our students here? Are we contributing to that? Are we using that in a positive way instructionally? So just trying to think through how kids use their devices and what they're consuming. So good pieces at that one. One of the keynotes really emphasized, Bill Ziegler was his name, talked about culture and that culture wins out. And had specific things at his district in Pennsylvania. They went through, had seven pieces for how they approach building a strong culture. And then the main keynote was Dave Weber. And he's also related to culture. His overall theme was that words impact relationships, relationships impact culture, culture impacts achievement results. And he went through different pieces on how he presents, puts that together, so that we have better understanding. A phrase that he used was quinonia. Never heard of that before, so I was, I had a hard time spelling that. It starts with a K. But anyway, it's quinonia, it's the coming together and a solidified oneness and atmosphere of openness, honesty, trust, affirmation, support, and encouragement. And that goes on to support, building culture in that way. So a lot of good things there. And start our second semester, so we're off and rolling there.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Strasser. Anyone have any questions for him? Nope. All right. Six-point-one, point-three. Ms. Bartman.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So tonight, I wanted just to talk to you a little bit about something that's come across to me from Holly Peter. She's our ECSE coordinator through the co-op, and Sarah Break, or Sarah Meyer, who is our ECSE professional development facilitator through the Minnesota Centers of Excellence. She shared with me, and the document is attached to the board notes, is that it's the classroom engagement model through MDE. It's to enhance classroom practice for all children in our pre-K. Since one of our goals, our district goals, is to be kindergarten-ready, I felt this was a great opportunity to jump on as soon as possible. And we're talking with Mr. Enerson, we thought we would like to bring it to the board for approval, so we could start the application process. We will be getting more information next Monday. We will have a meeting with Sarah Meyer and Holly Peter. And they will be explaining to myself and the ECSE and ECFE and preschool teachers what this all means. Even though it's through ECSE, the special education realm, it's geared for all children. And if we're approved, it will mean that we'll get support from MDE through the Joint Powers Agreement, or they call it a GPA. It's not a grant. It's a contract that we have with, we would have with MDE. We would pay out front, and then MDE would reimburse us for the professional development that we give our preschool teachers. The funding starts at $12,000. And this is a base, and it goes by our December first ECSE count. This amount decreases 20 percent each year with the end result of us adopting this model and using it to its full potential. Teachers get trained on using this model. And one of our teachers will be an internal coach, and they will be trained as well accordingly. And these dollars are used to train them. And then Sarah would be our external coach. The engagement model is a research-based and uses active implementation, which I also gave you some handouts there on your tables. Which means they explore, learn, try it, and practice, learn some more, and then they just keep running that cycle until it's fully implemented within the five years. The four modules that we look at are classroom-wide engagement strategies, classroom-wide strategies to increase independence in social relationships, engaging all individual children, and caregiver collaboration. So there's some collaboration with our daycares and also some of our private preschool sectors. This model is designed to address needs like natural environment, instruction within routines, responsive interactions, and partnerships with families. And it strengthens our instruction-interaction environment and our family engagement. So I gave you a form of what we get and what we give and what the families and children get. There's a sheet for you to look at. Like I said, this is just the basics. We're getting more in the nitty-gritty on Monday, so super excited about it.
In a nutshell, what do you think we'll get, I mean, what do you think our teachers will get out of this?
Well, I think they're going to get very valuable professional development that's going to help engage all children through play. And it's play that's intentional play. We all know that kids learn better when they're younger through play, and it's play through intentional play, if that makes sense. So we're not just, you know, playing in the sand, we're playing and writing letters, or whatever it may be. So they're going to get, and then the internal coach will get that special training to be able to go around and to assist and support those other, our teachers as well. And we have, you know, pretty brand-new teachers this year, so.
Have we had a chance to speak with other preschool providers in town or in our community?
I have spoke with, of course, what we have, and I have spoke to some of our private preschools. They are going to come to the meeting, those that can, on Monday. We can give them supports. There is a way for us to give supports, but in order to get the full model, they need the ECSE child within, you know, from our district in their classrooms. But there's still a way that we can give them the supports too, so that we're all on the same page. And that's what we want, is we want to all be on the same page.
When is the meeting gonna be?
It is at Brown, and it's at 3:30.
Okay, if I'm copying.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So explain the financial commitment again.
So the financial commitment comes from MDE. They give us, the base is $12,000, or that's, you won't get any less than $12,000. And that money is used for paying for subs and giving them their professional development that they need to be able to implement this framework. And then it decreases by $20,000 every year, and they do that because as you go, you need less professional development to get through this implementation process.
Subs while they're...
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty percent.
So subs for while they're training?
Mm-hmm.
How many days are you expecting them to be gone?
It's only five, well, there's one full day before school starts for our internal coach, and then there's, I believe, five half-days, so.
So that was a five-year commitment there?
Yeah.
So at the end of the five-year commitment, what kind of financial commitment is the district?
We should be able to implement this with no problem. It's just professional development. So it's teaching them how to have that engagement through the classroom for all kids. And so it's something we should by the end of five years have adopted and be using, you know, flawlessly, so.
And adopting and using flawlessly doesn't cost anything.
Right.
So it's training our teachers to be better teachers?
Yes. It is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any other questions? No? All right.
I'd maybe just add that this is a great opportunity for, you know, collaboration with other community partners and making sure that all of our kids come to school ready for kindergarten, so. And we most certainly look to share that and be a part of all of our providers in our community. Do the best job we can, so.
And we do need approval from the board to go forward with the application process as required, one of the requirements, so, for MDE.
So we need to do that tonight, right now?
Yes, please.
So do I have a motion to go forward with the application process for the classroom engagement model?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pfals. Any other discussion, any other questions? Any other discussion and questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of going forward with the application process for this classroom engagement model signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else? Tony?
That's it. That was my, I named Dr. T.
Okay. All right, moving on to six-point-one, point-four.
Ms. Welton, how are you? I'm doing well. Mine is just short and quick. We had District Staff Development Day on January 15th. It was a well-received staff development day based upon evaluation from staff. Our staff development committee had the opportunity to look over the evaluation and use it to plan forward future PV. The day was Ed Camp-style, so our staff taught, some of our staff taught the rest of our staff anything from Google Classroom to curriculum mapping, to Mr. Enerson taught Twitter, 101. We had some EL strategies for staff. And overall, it was a wonderful day. So hopefully we have more opportunities to do some PV like that in future.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Melanie? No? All right. Six-point-two, school board members. The MSBA conference. It was awesome, again.
It was, it was really.
The first day was, what was the guy's name? He was from up in...
Lindquist.
Mark Lindquist. Mark Lindquist. He was, he's from Ortonville.
Original.
Oh, yeah. He was adopted from Seoul, I believe, Korea. And then he moved to Ortonville, and he was awesome. I like motivational speakers, though, so he was awesome. And then he, one of his passions is to sing the National Anthem. And I was tweeting out going, "Sing for us, Mark, sing for us, Mark." And he sang for us at the very end, so. And then I know, and then the final guy, the closing keynote was Manny Scott. He's the gentleman from Freedom Riders. He was one of the actual original Freedom Rider kids, and he told his story, and...
That was good.
That was passionate, and needed Kleenexes, and it was awesome. It was awesome. Want to say anything you went to? I got, I'll share a few. I bought my book.
Oh, perfect.
Or go on to Twitter. MSBA 2017, or 18.
I went to a couple. I went into one on just prescription drug use in our schools. And it's really alarming how many, you know, across, how many deaths are associated with overdoses in the United States. How many kids are using prescription drugs and how they're, you know, getting them and those type of things. It's really scary. So I'm glad that we have Mr. Beekman here and stuff, that we're, you know, we're really taking an initiative to, you know, kind of work through it and work with the kids and kind of stop some of this. You know, one thing that they talked about was how these kids that go to these treatments and those type of things, when they come back to the schools, they kind of just get thrown back into their schools. And I don't know, I was gonna maybe follow up with probably Tanya, she's the one to follow up with on that, just what our protocol is for that. Because it was interesting, there was a girl that was there that kind of went, she was speaking on her own story, how she was kind of thrown back into school, and then, you know, she tried to stay away from it. But it was so hard, because you get pulled right back into that same group of friends, and there wasn't a lot of support as far as counselors and administration. So, you know, I'm interested to kind of hear, I was gonna ask Tanya what our protocol is for that, because that's interesting. Because I do think that's, you know, she already went through the 60 days of treatment, and then, you know, it took two weeks, and then she was right back where she started, you know, which is scary. Then I went to, I also went to one, Bloomington School Board put it on. And it was just about being in and out of our schools. And I kind of talked to Wendy about it, and I think this would be a good idea for us. What they do is, they try to once a month. Each board member has a school. They, of course, have a lot more schools than we do. But they try to go into their schools, one of their schools that they're more or less assigned to, at least once a month, whether it be to go have lunch in the lunchroom, talk to staff, you know, just kind of stick your head in and just be present in the schools. And they found a lot of, that they get a lot of information from that, and just that staff and everyone is more comfortable with them. Like, we had talked about, we wouldn't want teachers to feel like we're checking up on them or anything like that. So I'd probably want to send an email, you know, have Tony or you guys send an email out that says that, you know, we may be popping in type thing, and that it's not a big deal. And then what they found after a year or so of doing it, is they actually have teachers that say, "Hey, we're doing this in our classroom, would you like to stop by?" You know, they enjoy, the teachers liked it too, type thing. But they thought that was really valuable, and just being in and out of the schools. And they said, "You'd be surprised at how many things you notice, just being in people's classrooms, being in the hallways, being, you know, present in those environments." So I thought it was kind of neat. Might be something to think about doing. And then they, what they do is, at board meetings, when you have your school board member reports, then they just kind of go, you know, say, "Hey, I did this," or, you know, type thing, just to let everyone know what they checked out or what they, you know, found, or that type of thing, so. Or if there was any fun things going on, so.
Thank you. I did go to one that was everything you need to know about the new tiered teacher licensure.
I didn't go to that one.
Put on by the Board of Teaching. That's all I'll say about that one. Moved up. The best one that I went to, though, was the Rock and Read Project. They were dancing and singing, and research has shown that this increases kids' reading abilities, and it was really cool. So I can give you the names if you'd ever want to check them out. But they had, they were dancing and showing videos of kids reading and using song to do that. It was quite festive. So that was good. That was the Rock and Read Project. It was awesome. Thank you for, thank you for taking us, for allowing us to go. It was great.
I know it's a commitment and time off, that it's hard, but it is a very good conference. One of the better ones. They have so many different sessions of things that are going on across the state, so as school board members, this is kind of the one big one a year. So it's always good if you can go. So again, next January, if you can, it's about that same time, second week, usually around the 10th, 11th of January. Again, I know it's a commitment to take some time off from work. It's a couple days, for sure. But it is, it is a good conference with good speakers and good for, good for school board development, so.
And I say thank you for allowing us to go. Letting us to go up there to go to this together as a whole and learn together. Although it's a small pool this year. All you people were missing. All right. Any other comments on that? Katie, you good?
No, I'm good.
All right. So six-point-three, superintendent.
I've got a few things. Enrollment is probably, I think I noticed that it's not an unusual trend that in January is our lowest enrollment point. Probably the coldest time of year to live in Minnesota. So, but, you know, we do fluctuate. It's up and down every month, and again, this month it's down a little bit. So hopefully, we just keep an eye on that. Enrollment is very important, and we have to watch that. Couple other things. The Virtual Learning Day, met with the teachers' group for that. And I think we've come to an agreement that we feel pretty good about for the Virtual Learning Day. I think we would like to do that for grades two through 12, if it works out. Kindergarten and first grade would do more of a virtual day activities, but it really wouldn't be counted as a student day, is how you would look at it. So we would, we would lose that. The teachers actually asked if we could do it this year, and I said, "Well, the statute says you have to let them know a year at the beginning of the school year and where things are at," so. But I said I'd check with MDE, so I called the Department of Education and spoke with their learning day specialist, and this does not apply to what our plan would be. They, the statute states if you're going to do a snow day, virtual school day on a snow day, that's where this applies. We are kind of modifying that, which a number of other school districts have done. And he said that this is more of a calendar that you make at a local, that's a local decision if you want to do those type of things. So he says you could actually go ahead and do this virtual learning day like we've put out this year if you wanted to. The earliest we could do a virtual day would be March, which is the Thursday before the Easter break. So the plan is, is in February that we would bring this to the board for consideration. I don't know if you have any questions or things you'd like to know before that's brought to the board, or if you just want to discuss it.
What would be the point of doing a virtual day? I mean, why would we do it if we could really, could have school regularly?
Well, the point would be is the staff would like to give us a practice and a run-through. We did do it at the, when we'd had the election for the referendum. We did a virtual day for grades five through 12. They would like to try that to see how it works again, and when do you run these type of trial periods? So that's why we would like to. And the elementary would, you know, they have to come up with procedures of how they send the devices home, and, you know, so there's some things and logistics that you need to work out, plus also planning your lessons for that day to be effective. And then, of course, you know, the teachers need to be available that day, so they would have to do that. One of the things we talked about with this is that it is a scheduled makeup day, but people tend to maybe, maybe have plans for that. This way you can probably still do your plans. The virtual things don't have to always be done that day. They might be able to do some of those activities before they return, or when they get back, or when they're on vacation, or when they are traveling. So it just gives some flexibility with that, and also people have plans, so they can kind of hold to their calendars, so. But the primary reason we would do this instead of coming in is right now, is we need to do some of these to kind of practice them and see how they go and work out some of the things. Because I know that when we did this with the middle school, high school, they learned a number of things, and there are some things they do different. The elementary who would be willing, you know, they would like to experience it, so. The goal would be is that if we do do this a few times, that eventually we would get to the point where we could actually do the virtual day on the snow day. But we feel that probably would be a year or two, depending upon how many times we get to practice it. But they just would like to have a run-through of it, so. But, yeah. Go ahead.
So you would plan a virtual day on that day before the Easter break, whether we had a snow day or didn't have a snow day? Is that what you're saying?
No, only if we have a snow day.
Only if we have a snow day, then.
And we had to make it up, because that's a scheduled makeup day.
Make-up day, right.
So instead of being a makeup day where we bring everybody in, we would actually just do a virtual day that day. That way we could plan for it, be ready for it, and give it a, give it a try. And if there are those who have plans, and maybe they were leaving on vacation, you know, they can still do. We have, you know, we probably still have 95 percent attendance on any given day, so. But those that are available, we could, we could do, do some of this as a practice run, kind of is what we're thinking about, with the idea of someday being able to do this on the snow day. I understand, we could bring the kids in. I mean, that, we understand that, but I don't know how you get to the point of being prepared for a snow. I mean, we could have to work on that and see, but it's just nice to try these things. I know that, and, you know, Mr. Strasser, I think your staff pointed out that it was really nice to, learned a lot going through that, so. And they even asked about doing it some more, so they could really get that feel for it before we actually did do a snow day. So that's why if someone were to ask, I guess, what we're looking at. All right. Facilities Committee, met last week. I don't know if, prepared a little something here. I bought four of these. The Facilities Committee met last Thursday, and with ISG, and we kind of talked about the report that the district got, that you all heard about, and kind of what are our next steps. And I think that we came out of that meeting saying what we need to do is... And I think that, um, we came out of that meeting saying what we need to do is, we need to bring what that report said to the community and to our constituents. So we kind of, we're thinking that we'd like to have a community meeting in February to kind of share what we've learned and to maybe listen. I think that's probably one of the things that we want to be hearing from the community. What do they think about this report? What questions do they have? What work would they like the school board to undertake and consider, um, as we move forward with our facility questions? Um, so I, I think that's kind of where we're at right now, is you have it. Uh, I know it's been reported a little bit publicly of some of the things, but I think we really should have that open. And I know we talked, I think Lance brought up about like that World Cafe where your board members might be at tables and community members sit with you and ask questions and just have some of that open dialogue, uh, with the community on these things. So I think that's kind of what we're looking for. Uh, I put together this, which is, I, I think that was why did we do this assessment? What, what's going on? And of course, uh, we, we have some space issues in our elementary. Uh, I think we had a ten-year long-term facility maintenance plan. And it was like, what, what's that? And what do we need to do? So we really wanted to get some information about the state of our facilities and what needs to be fixed. And then, um, I think, um, we have some security issues at all of our buildings that was another priority that we wanted to look at. So those were kind of why we asked for this. And then, you know, there's some things that have come about, you know, back when those elementary facilities were built. There was no special education. There was no every student succeeds act. There was, and even the, the air quality and security is all changed. And so we just, as a school district, really need to be looking at those elementary buildings and what do we want to do? Um, on the back page of that, it talks a little bit about, you know, what we've learned and then, uh, kind of what we're looking for, for some community input. This is a very rough sketch, so that's why it's, I just brought this. I want you to think about it if there's other things, but, um.
So this would be what you'd hand out?
Or in some form, we would present this.
But at present, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if this is what we.
Right, but I mean, it would be a.
High level summary.
Yes. Summary of what, so people, yeah.
I mean, we have, we have a hundred and sixty-five page.
Right.
Report that is down to the nitty gritty with.
Right.
Millions of dollars of things that need to be addressed and how do you, how do you start breaking that down? I mean, I, I can't give a hundred and sixty-three page report to everybody.
Right.
If you want to look at it, you know, we've got it. We can, we can share it. But then there's also, you know, I think we were questioned, uh, someone in the community questioned, well, you don't have to do what these guys say.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they didn't make this up because that's what they want to do. They, they, we asked them to tell us what's the state of our conditions. And they're looking at what the state of our can, facilities are in accordance with state laws and, and building codes and, um, ADA compliance and security. I mean, they, they know all of those details and, and how you bring that up and what's most efficient in heating and air exchange and, and then in the education program, what, you know, so I mean, that's, there is a lot that we need to learn, our community needs to learn. And so I think we just need to start and, um, I guess there's no need to hold off. I think it's probably in February. Um, and I guess we probably will figure out as a board when that can happen, but I'm just, I've been throwing this around of how do we do this? And I'm thinking, as board members, do you, do you kind of call up six to ten people and invite them personally? And let's try to get a group of seventy people, a hundred people to some community and, and give a presentation and then just kind of sit down and have that discussion? What do you want? I mean, we can make it open to the public too, but, you know, you also want to try to get some people there that, you know, maybe you know, or that you feel would be really good to come and hear this. I think we should try to invite some of our farmers and some of our businesses and so, I mean, we just kind of take that approach to that and have that community conversation about these facilities. And from there, I hope that they would be able to give us, you know, what do they think? What do they, what do they want us to do? What do they think we should look at? What would they like to know more about?
Mm-hmm.
And then we probably would gather that information and try to come back with them again, maybe in March and find out a little bit more and try to refine down where our community is at and, and how do we respond? And again, I think most of it is, um, I think we talked too, a lot of this has to be board work. I look at Tammy and Randy because they're on the Facilities Committee. Uh, they were there that night and Lance also is, is on the committee, but I mean, is that, I think it, it is really about you as elected officials hearing what the community is thinking.
Mm-hmm.
And, and they need, they need, they don't need it from me or I S G. We're the, I know I live here and I like this community, but I'm still that guy you hired from out of town. You know, you're, you're elected. This is what you do. And so hearing helps us to make the best decision of what we need to do and how fast do we need to move and, you know, what, where are we at? What, what, what do people want, so.
I think it'd be a good idea to invite people, you know, we, they did that, the extension agent did that for four H. We got a lot of good information just from a lot of different opinions and areas, which really helped kind of, you know, steer us in the right direction about where we want to go and what we need to do. And I think that, I mean, we had good, I mean, every, I mean, most of the people that we invited came, we had very good turnout.
And this would be off campus, away from the school, or most likely?
I think we thought.
I think we thought that might be the best. Sorry, is that on? I need it off in case I have a cough attack. Um, yeah, I think, I think we had said that just kind of going into a neutral zone and, and, you know, just presenting the information initially and not have, you know, people ask a ton of questions and then, you know, then the next meeting that we would have, and that way they have time to process all this stuff. And then, then they can come, you know, with, with questions and, but just kind of keep on this, you know, um, just to keep them informed and, you know, get their input, you know. We kind of just thought maybe up until summertime, just kind of keep plugging away, just trying to get, you know, ideas and, you know, just keep inviting those people back and, um, you know, then we have some good information gathered by then to, to figure out where, where we think we want to go with the decisions that we make as a board, so.
Sounds good.
And I think, uh, I S G also, there's a survey group that will really, once we kind of have some pretty good ideas, they will then start to survey the whole community and kind of get a feeling for, it's not every, I mean, I guess if everybody comes, that'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
We'd have to do this at the fairground, prance down. Might be a little cold in February.
I'd say let's wait till.
If everybody shows up, that'd be a good problem. But, you know, I mean, eventually you'd like to try to get a really good cross-section because you know not everyone's going to come. And, uh, you try to get all of those things, so.
You know, and that's one thing, you know, that Kevin had brought up, you know, how he wanted us as a board to get involved. Um, you know, we just thought that that was a good thing as well, so that the community can see that, you know, it's not just Kevin presenting it and Kevin having a passion about it, but that, you know, yes, you know, we're at those meetings, but, you know, I think we thought that it would be a good idea if we all sort of presented some, some little tidbit of it, you know, and kind of, you know, were there and, um, you know, just showed the community that, you know, we support the decision that we made and, you know, what we, you know, want to do going forward, I guess. So we just kind of thought that that would be a, a good thing, you know, as the board.
Which will be close by.
But yeah, no, he'll be there.
Just in case. Well, I don't know, ask.
Yeah, yeah, right, yep.
When is there, is there photos or, I mean, of things, some of the things, did they took photos of some of that? Could that be on like a show, you know, like a projector or whatever, just to show some of the, you know, I mean.
Yep. We, we kind of talked in our, in our meeting, kind of some things maybe that we would, I mean, see and do.
Be different to me than, you know.
No, looking at a paper and. Could, you know, have some time to.
Yeah.
Take people on tours, but we did, you know, try and think of some ways to show people, you know.
Right.
Kids in the classrooms and the tight spaces and, you know, not have them tour it when the classes are empty.
Right.
You know, so that they can see what, you know, what they're, they're doing and, you know, and, and that will come. I mean, you know, with it, we, we've kind of just talked about a few things. We just need to kind of get it together, but, you know, we thought pictures or, you know, video, um, that kind of thing.
I think that's where we kind of have our ideas, but that's where you have these meetings with the community.
Mm-hmm.
And when they ask questions, well, well, why do you need this? Or what does it, you know, that's where, oh, you, you want to know what things look like when kids are sitting in hallways with adults. Okay, we can give you a few pictures and show you that. We can show you, you know, it shows that they're undersized. We can take you in and show you, uh, the classrooms and how scrunchy they are in some areas and how, I don't know. Not only likes it when I make up words.
It's scrunchy.
Oh, it is a word! Oh, it's just a really good descriptor. So, but I think that's, and I think as a board, you just need, I think we're going to be moving into this phase and, um, I think that was one of the things too. It's have your ears on, you know, you're listening. What does our community want? I, I think we all know, I mean, we're not doing this for, just for an exercise. I mean, I think we know that there's an issue, but it's our community that has to understand that and, and they, and what are their questions and how do we answer them? And that's where you as a board kind of have to respond to the people you represent, so. But yeah, well, if they have questions on special ed, I'll answer that. I can get you through that. Um, if there's questions on why do you need this much air going through the classrooms for circuit, you know, I S G can be there to answer the technical things, because there's going to be all of that that people may ask, so. That's kind of where that's at. So over the next couple of weeks, we'll, I'll probably be refining, be surveying a date when all of you can be available and we'll try to pull together a community meeting and.
And we'll all start thinking of our six to ten people.
And you start thinking and once we get that out, I think we'll, we'll put it out to the.
Everyone.
Everyone in the, anybody in the community. I mean, this is not some exclusive group, but I think we just want to, I mean, I know when we did the Pipestone Forward and everybody invited and we had that nice community group of a hundred people that talked about the strategic plan of the city, this is a very similar thing, but that didn't just happen.
Mm-hmm.
We all invited and Pipestone Forward community, uh, board members, you know, were actively calling and sending out invitations. So I think we'll kind of try the same thing, think about who, and I, again, I think you have to find the people who are going to ask the good questions. Uh, people with some expertise in, I mean, there's electrical systems and mechanical. I mean, if we have plumbers, people in our community who do these jobs, uh, let's start getting the right people, not people who just agree.
Right.
But people who will know and be able to ask the good questions that we need to answer, so they feel comfortable about why we're doing this. Um, so that's kind of where that's at.
Start my list.
So you're thinking later in February? Is that what you're thinking? I mean, we're almost in February.
Yeah, we were, we were probably thinking, you know.
Mid, mid, you know, second.
Okay.
Yeah. Not on Valentine's Day.
Sure.
And not a Wednesday. I think we'll try to find a, a date that works in there, so. But we do really want to get something going in February. Because, because the timeline was, is that we, there might be a need for two to three meetings. And it doesn't take long and we're in June and it's summer. So we kind of wanted to get, we're not going to have meetings over the summer, but then maybe in the fall, again, we can start going with deeper ideas of things, so.
Yep.
And it's not that we're trying to rush you anything, but we are looking at, you know, the, just some timelines of things that make sense, so that's kind of where the board's at. Um, and then I had, um, we, we, last month, the veterans group came and talked about the memorial or a, an idea for a memorial here on school property. And you asked me to contact our attorney about any issues there. Uh, there were a couple. Um, one is, is that, um, you know, with any type of group and, well, I shouldn't say, it doesn't have anything about any type of group. School property, school facilities, we're here to educate kids and so that's what everything should be, we should be doing all of that. I understand the educational purpose that this group was talking about, but really we're, that's another group. And so the school's not looking to do this. It's, it's another group, so that you really should look, consider selling them some of our land or leasing some of our land to them for this. It's just messy because if it's going to be on our property, the second issue is, is it's about free speech. And I know the veterans and we're not going to dispute that our veterans have done great service to our country, but you do open up equal access issues and free speech issues and any group now that wants to use school property for their memorials is about free speech. So once you allow now limiting, you start getting yourself into a really delicate position, so, um, that's what the legal opinion was. There are a couple of issues here that get to be, add the complexity. It's, you know, everything you wish was easy and simple, but when you do look at things down in, in a long-term fashion, there gets to be complexities with all of this stuff, so. That's what our attorney said, and I think that, uh, I would again, probably, I don't know if you want to do anything with it or send it back to the Facility Committee or if you want to invite them back and discuss it further, or how do you want to handle that?
Well, I think we would need to get them back to discuss the findings from the attorney. But if we sold them a parcel, then we really don't control as to what they put on it. Then that eliminates the free access.
If you sell it to them.
If you sold it to them.
If we want to sell our land. Another discussion that we have to, you know, decide.
But I think you're going, we're going to have to invite them to a meeting and explain, this is what our attorney has said. These are our findings. Because they're going to want to pursue other avenues as to where to either put it, or they're going to want to pursue an avenue of still putting it out here.
Do you want it at a full school board meeting, or did you want them to come and talk to the facilities? Would that be easier or?
I think it should go through facilities.
I mean, it could be lengthy discussion. I don't want to take up, you know, an hour of.
Right. So it should probably go through facilities and then it can come back with a synopsis of what.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify which route you want to go.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. No, I, I think facilities is, is appropriate.
Okay.
Especially where they don't, they didn't really know how much land they wanted, which.
Yep.
I mean, to me, you're going to have to know that, you know, as far as, they're going to have to pinpoint at least what they want, size-wise.
They were finding out a lot of answers too. They didn't have a lot of answers.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But in all fairness to them, I mean, we've got to be able to give them an answer of.
Right.
So if it goes through you guys and then give us a synopsis, then.
Okay.
We can act on it.
And thank you for suggesting that.
Yeah. I just, I mean, I was just thinking, well, it could go into some lengthy discussion, you know, it could take a while to just, you know, discuss that. So I'd rather not, you know, do it at a full meeting, you know, but.
So equal access would mean if we would choose to sell property to the VA group, then another group that would come in could also request that same, sell the property to them?
Um, equal access is, is to school property. If you sell it, then it's not an issue really. You can sell your, if you want to sell your property.
Okay. Just to clarify.
Then, then it doesn't become so much of a free speech issue. But if you are going to let them just put something here, or if you're going to lease them and have it on school grounds, now you're kind of, anybody can.
Request that.
Who wants to put a monument or a memorial or some type of statement may do so.
Thanks.
All right. And that's all I got.
Is that all you got?
Yeah.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, let's move to seven, old business. We can do this all in one shot, 7-1 through 7-11, the second reading of policy 406, 418, 427, 501, 502, 504, 505, 508, 509, 512, and 515. Do you want to give us a little spiel at each before we do the motion?
I can, I think you would like me to give you.
Yeah, it'd be great.
What they're all, um, these are second readings because I wanted to bring them back to our admin and different staff, uh, on the district as far as, you know, if there's any issues or concerns, uh, I think everything is in order, but, uh, the first one here, um, 406 is public and private data, uh, we got a lot of data on students and employees and this basically is a policy that just stipulates what's private and what's public. And in today's day and age and we collect fees and bank numbers and, I mean, there's all kinds of things that are just private and not for public, and then there are some of our information that is public, so that policy just states that, there's really no major updates, it's just one that needs to be reviewed. Uh, policy 418 is the drug-free workplace, drug-free school, uh, this again is not allowing medical cannabis, uh, on school property, um, even if there's a prescription, um, we're saying that that's not, um, we're not, we're not allowing medical cannabis to be dispensed here by our nurse or on school property and the nurse is fully in support of that. Uh, policy 427, workload limits in special education, um, this doesn't put any restrictions on the school district, it just basically says that, um, we will consider certain factors and the district gets to determine what they are. The school weapons policy, basically no major changes except they took out the terms zero tolerance and changed it to does not allow one change in the weapons policy. Has to do with the Supreme Court, Minnesota Supreme Court decision on zero tolerance with weapons policies and, um, just one of those things we need to have right. Policy 502 is search of student lockers and personnel positions, uh, no significant changes, uh, the last time that policy's been reviewed by the board was 1999. Again, not a lot of changes since that time, but it's just one of those where we should just make sure that we're showing that it's up to date and, um, policy 504, student dress and appearance, uh, no significant changes there either, uh, but it does, just so everyone knows and our community, school district does have the right to stipulate how, in some cases, how we dress and what's maybe inappropriate or not appropriate, so that's what this policy gives us opportunity to, um, address, also last updated in 2002. Policy 505 is, is really about free speech, it's about the distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premise by students and staff, um, this is a free speech thing, um, and basically it gives the school district the right to limit some of that due to, um, responsibility and educational objectives and maintaining an orderly environment, so. I hear something buzzing.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, policy 508, uh, extended school year for student, certain students, uh, I think pretty self-explanatory, this came in a few years ago also where it just says you can have an extended school year for students who need it in special education, um, so that's still in place and just a few minor updates to that. Policy 509, just, uh, enrollment of non-resident students, this is a statute update, is one thing that's changed in there. Policy 512, student-sponsored, student, or school-sponsored student publications and activities, um, mostly has to do with the school newspaper, free, freedom of speech and the district's role in limiting some of that due to maintaining a, uh, healthy environment and one, uh, free of major disruption, so, um, again, the freedom of speech is a constitutional right in this country and it's been upheld in many places and many times that schools have some right to limit in the school, so, um, just another one of those policies and it last updated in 2002, so we're looking at that. And then policy 512, and I just wanted to show, this is our policy on student privacy and student data and records, it's very thick, it's, uh, quite a few pages, um, 40 pages to be exact, so when people want to know what's going on and what's happening and, and we tend to not say a whole lot because we have some policies that say, and, and when you're a student, you have a right to privacy and when we're dealing in a disciplinary situation or an educational situation, that is private student data and not public, even though everybody else in the world maybe knows about it, as a school district, we can't say anything because of this unless we're authorized by the individuals and most people don't want us airing their stuff with the rest of the public, so I know people get frustrated, I know people say that we don't do nothing and there's no actions and there's no, because that we don't share what happens, all we really say is we follow our policies, you know, we're, we're following what, what's in place and I know that, um, you know, that comes up and, um, I, I, again, the public, I understand that's, that's part of that frustration, but you as board members get to know a little bit more, but you're held to the same standard of privacy, so you can't share it either, but you do know and you know that if you ask me that I can let you know what's going on, most of the time, you don't really want to get into too many details because you may end up being the jury or the judge of something that's going on in our school, so, um, but you do know that, and I, and if there are any questions, I, I feel free to ask, but I just understand that we do have checks and balances, the checks on the principals, you know, on the teachers is the principals, the checks on the principals is me, the checks on me is you, and the checks on you is the voters, so, uh, we have all of these processes in place, but we do need to respect people's right to privacy and it is against the law for us to break that, so. I just wanted to just, that's one thing you hear all the time and this ain't three pages, this is a thick booklet and it's, it's extensive as to what we need to do and sometimes that's why I think because of this educators tend to, when someone comes at us, we're just, whoa, we're, we just freeze up because we don't know everything, we don't have this thing memorized, so our first response is, uh, data privacy, you know, we got, you know, so that, and I mean, we can check into things more and I, you know, that's where it all goes, so. That's my spiel on our policies and so I recommend you guys approve them if you want.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve all of the policies, 7-1 through 7-11. Thank you, Mr. Bott, so I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies, well said, pal. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving 7-1 through 7-11 policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Moving on to number eight, new business, 8.1 is a deletion, 8.2, approve policy 213 school board committees.
Uh, that policy we approved at our organization meeting, we made a couple of adjustments and we made all of our assignments, so, um, that policy I recommend just approving in one reading, it's ready to go.
All right, do I have a motion to approve policy 213 school board committees? Thank you, Mr. Bott, so I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman, any other questions? Any questions on that? Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving 213 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, 8.3, approve to declare technology equipment surplus.
Uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Stook will add some stuff we're not using anymore and we can declare it surplus and then we can sell it or dispose of it as we see fit, I don't remember what it was that he, I don't.
Says, yeah, it's on there.
I don't know if it's anything he's going to.
Dell 310s and 320s.
Maybe some of it. We had a very good discussion about this in our tech meeting the other day and, you know, one of the things when we sell stuff, when it breaks down or doesn't, they come back and want, you know, you sold it to me and I, I told Josh, you're probably better off just, let's just get rid of it and not, you know, I mean, unless it's something that is maybe super valuable, but a lot of this stuff, we end up, probably costs him more if people are coming back and asking to fix things, so. Desktop computer, yeah.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the, to declare technology equipment surplus? Thank you, Mrs. Pals, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stopford.
A little deeper today.
Any other discussion on that? The other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving to declare technology equipment surplus signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 8.4, approve budget recommendations from finance budget committee.
Um, finance budget committee met and we kind of went over where our budget is, our revenue projections and expenditure projections, um, for next year, uh, basically the budget committee recommends that, um, we don't change our fund balance goal at this time, we keep it as is, um, a little uncertain about state funding going forward, so they feel that right now that's in a prudent and right place, and then also, uh, in looking at the budget, they recommend that, uh, the admin team, if they have any budget, um, any improvements, they should be budget neutral, meaning you should find a way to pay for any of the things that, um, they recommend for improvements for next year, so. Uh, that was kind of what came out of, uh, the meeting from the analysis of our budget, uh, proposed budget for next year.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve budget recommendations from the committee?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bott, so I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies, any other questions or discussion? Any other thoughts or comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the budget recommendations from the committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 8.5, 218 pay equity report, this is an addition.
I'm going to turn this over to Jackie Kennedy, our business manager, because she's really into this, sorry, set you up.
Pay equity report, the school board has to approve this, this, I think this is the fourth one I've done, if you want to know what it is, I'm just going to read what it is. State law requires all public jurisdictions such as cities, counties, and school districts to eliminate any gender-based wage inequities and compensation and submit reports to Minnesota management budget. Pay equity is a method of eliminating discrimination based against women who are paid less than men for jobs requiring comparable levels of expertise. This goal is beyond the familiar idea of equal pay for equal work where men and women with the same jobs must be paid equally, a policy to establish pay equity usually means that all jobs will be evaluated and given points according to the level of knowledge and responsibility and that salary adjustments will be made if it is discovered that women are consistently paid less than men for jobs with similar points. So what I do and I can pass this around, this, I come up with job classes, well, I don't, the state does, so like custodian is on here, then I have this big book that's called state job match, you go through there and it tells you how many points you assign to custodian and you put how many males or how many male custodians you have, how many female custodians you have, the minimum salary, the maximum salary, what the health insurance benefits added on, and the person with the longest years of experience, then I submit this to the state, then they come back and tell me if we're in compliance or not. That's what it is. And then I had to pull something like this and, uh, Greg Ruhl was saying that this has been completed and that if you want to look at it, you can come talk to me and look at the information and we were out of, we have, you have to do it every three years, in 2015 we were out of compliance, but then we appealed it and then we'd be, we were in compliance, it's fine.
Okay.
It's just something you have to do.
So you need approval.
I need approval and then I'm going to get, I need to get your signature on this afterwards because.
Okay.
Saying that I have your signature before I hit the button, sort of, to the state.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the pay equity report for 2018?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bott, second.
Second.
Tim's got it. All right, any other discussion on that, any other questions for Jackie? Any other questions? All right, all those in, hearing none, all those in favor of pay equity report for 2018 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, 8.6, approve to declare camera surplus, this is an addition.
Cameras we don't use anymore. We don't want them and they're taking up space.
Do I have a motion to approve the declaring the cameras surplus?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals.
I was waiting.
Any other questions on that? Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving to declare the camera surplus signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, 8.7, approve Governor Dayton's proclamation of paraprofessional recognition week, which was last week, 22nd through the 26th.
Coincided with our normal.
The one, the one bummer of postponing our meeting for a week is that we're now recognizing that last week was paraprofessional week and you would have normally kicked off the week, uh, I just wanted to add that as a district, uh, we did, uh, give some recognition to our paras, um, we did, uh, provide some subway lunch to them on Wednesday and I know there were teachers that did some potluck lunches for them and, uh, we tried to do some things, we really appreciate the work that they do, they're an important part of the education of our children and, um, you know, sometimes it's not a real fun job and, and it's a tough job, so we appreciate those people who, um, really are dedicated to our kids, um, we really appreciate them.
And thank you for tweeting it out, I could retweet it.
Yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to approve Governor Dayton's proclamation of paraprofessional recognition week last week?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies, do I have a second?
Second.
Who do you want to give to? Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other questions, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the proclamation of paraprofessional recognition week signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries for adjourned.